Okay, ready to go. Thank you, those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. It is 5:01 PM on Monday, July 17th, 2023. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Director Barnes, Director Etscor, and Director Whitfield, Student Representative Laura Wittenberg, Superintendent Sean Woodward, Executive Cabinet, and members of the school district as well as members of the community. Director Campbell will not be present at tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these, on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Okay, we have one late add item on our agenda, item 6.01. I grant 2000 or 219 straight transitional bilingual instructional program. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated July 17th, 2023 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, raise your hand. The motion passes four to zero. Moving on to agenda item 3.01, policy 3432 emergencies, and this is our first reading. And we, I would like to invite Kelly Pitts, Director of Safety and Risk Management, to assist and guide us in the first reading of both policies. So but policy 3432 as well as policy 4210, Regulation of Dangerous Weapons on School Premises. Hey Kelly.
How you doing? So just in annual review and going to the kind of the recommendations of what was to annually puts out and says, hey, here's some new recommendations in language. These are both policies that reviewed their recommendations and created some, a little bit of some updated language in those to try and keep them up to date.
Any questions, directors?
Why, maybe you can, I was just wondering this, why did they move from move evade and defend to just lockdowns?
Move evade defend was terminology solely based on my predecessor. He kind of took what's nationally recognizes some other terms and put his own terminology in it. And the rest of the, let's say, the industry recognizes more of just the responses. Principles are very similar, but it gets away from the language that he created.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Kelly.
Okay.
Okay, so that covered 3.01 and 3.02. Moving on to agenda item 4.01, consideration of donations, Director Barnes.
Okay, so we have a few more donations that have come in. We have the Salem Woods Elementary PTA has donated a monetary grant of the amount of $241.28 for the sole and express purpose of purchasing marker space supplies. We also have Salem Woods Elementary PTA donated a monetary grant in the amount of $444.94 for the sole and express purpose of a new recess supply cart. So some new things headed to Salem Woods, all thanks to the PTA and their fundraising abilities and their generosity. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Barnes. Moving on to agenda item 4.02, student representative. Hey Laura.
Hello. I don't have a lot to report on being that school is not currently in session, but I have two exciting. Um, there's two students that, excuse me, two students won the VFW contests, and they're both students from Sky Valley. Like, there's more than just these two contests, but Sky, Sky Valley Education Center first grade student Jude Locasa won first place in the Washington State VFW Get Excited About the Red, White, and Blue Star Spangled Banner Singer. Star Spangled Banner Singing Contest, excuse me. And then also fifth grade student Mary Locasa won the first place in Washington State in her age category in the VFW Illustrating America Art Contest. In both entries will now go to the national competition in Washington DC, which is great to hear. Both are very talented kids.
Any questions for Laura? Are you having a fun summer, Laura?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Staying active, staying busy?
Yeah, well, I'm working.
Okay, so. Great, awesome. Thank you, Laura. Okay, moving on to agenda item 4.03, public comment. Public comment forms received after the meeting has started will be saved for the following meeting. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is the policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join us as a panelist, allow video, and unmute your microphone. It looks like we have one public comment tonight. Mike, our first speaker is Mike. Please state your name and for the record and your relationship with our schools.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mike Scherstedt. I am a citizen here in Monroe. I do not have kids in the district, but I am a local pastor and our congregation has children in, in the area, so I am a concerned citizen. But I'm, tonight I'm a friend of the board. I am not coming for or against any policy that you have on your agenda, but we'd like to make you aware of something that will be coming up shortly. On behalf of myself, I'll get the three. Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna speak fast. Yeah. By way of background, I served four years in the House of Representatives in Washington State from 1995 to 1999. So I do know how to read legislation and bills, although it's been about two and a half decades since I was there. Recently, a Senate Bill 5599 has passed legislature and is now in law. And the way I read that legislation and the new law, it says that youth facilities are required to hide from the parents any runaways that are seeking abortion or gender-affirming care. It's also come to my attention that the school district is aware of about 280 homeless students in the district. And of those 280, we are, we are helping or aiding some with housing. And to the, what extent, I don't know, but that we are doing that. And that there might be totally appropriate to help runaway students with, with aid or finding housing. However, with the combination of the new law, Senate Bill 5599, that requires, again, requires that the students, the homeless youth, be sheltered from their parents, be hidden from their parents if they're seeking abortion or gender-affirming care, which can include puberty blockers, genital removal, organ removal. If it's going to be for that, and the school district is participating with helping students get housing, then there is, then there, it appears as far as citizens and parents that the students, that the school board, I'm sorry, that the school district would be helping hide children from their parents. And I want to bring that to your attention. I don't know that you have a policy on that, but I would formally, I would formally request that you form a policy that states whether the school district will participate with youth shelter facilities that are required by law to hide children from their parents for certain circumstances. And if you decide either for moral reasons or legal reasons that the district needs to continue to help shelter students, homeless students from their parents, to hide them from their parents. Another formal request I would have is that you notify parents before the, all parents in the district, before each youth school year starts, that if they drop their students off at the school, that they may not come home that day. In full disclosure, like we get full disclosure when you buy a box of aspirin, there's, there's, there are risks associated. If it's, if it's possible, the school district is helping shelter a runaway. Parents need to know that their kids aren't, may not come home for the purposes of having genitalia removed or organs removed. It is an important matter. Full disclosure, appropriate. Thank you for your time. I will submit my testimony and the legislation highlighted for you so you can easily read it and make your own opinions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we have, next up is agenda item 5.01, policy 3116, Students in Foster Care. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy 3116, Students in Foster Care.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy 3116, Students in Foster Care, discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item 5.02, policy 3122, excused and unexcused absences. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy 3122, excused and unexcused absences.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy 3122, excused and unexcused absences. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item 5.02, 5.03, excuse me, Building Fire Inspection Improvements. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the fire alarm inspections and improvements agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the fire alarm inspections and improvements agreement, discussion. So I'll just read the description because it's here and I think it's helpful. Our cost for fire alarm inspections and repairs will exceed $40,000. I have received higher quotes and denials from other companies to prove that Performance Systems Integrations is the best option for the district. They are the lowest bid and have been a fantastic company to work with.
And are these the improvements that are happening now, Victor? At Sky Valley?
Yeah, no, these are the annual inspections that are required by law that we didn't get to last year when we did our budget cuts and stopped spending, so they're just continuing and it peaked over the 40,000.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, the Sky Valley one is still a separate entity.
And you mentioned some no bids here. How many bids did we receive in total?
Two complete bids, and there were many attempts or a few other attempts. Can you hear me? Okay. I need to let you know or make sure you, make sure you know that this is a five-year deal that we're working on. By doing that, it gives us 15% off additional work, fixing deficiencies, repairs, and then things that aren't part of the normal. So this is just the annual fire alarm inspections, which also includes sprinkler systems. There's also five, 10, 20-year inspections for the sprinklers. There are very few, but so with those, we would save 15% by going with the five-year plan.
Thank you for that overview and for getting us into a plan that saves the district money. I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Adam or Vic? Did you, okay, okay. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item 5.04, Chartwell's Contract Amendment Number Six. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Chartwell's Contract Amendment Number Six.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Chartwell's Contract Amendment Number Six. Discussion.
I just want to thank, I mean, Marcy's not here, but Marcy and those in the district who put the pedal to the metal and really got this figured out and got lunches for 43 days for the students in our community from July 5th through September 1st. Making sure that we feed our students that need it is incredibly important. So I just truly appreciate everyone's efforts to come together and make this happen for our kids.
The teachers as well, who brought up this issue to our attention, and thank them as well.
All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item 5.05, Food Service Contract Renewal and Consideration of Meal Prices, 2324. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the existing contract with Chartwell's Dining Service for an additional one-year period to continue through August 31st, 2024, and approve the proposed meal prices for the 2023-2024 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the existing contract with Chartwell's Dining Service for an additional one-year period to continue through August 31st, 2024, and approve the proposed meal prices for the 2324 school year discussion.
Do we, I don't know if this is for you, Victor, do we get other bids for the food service?
Yeah, that'll start in the spring of next year at the end of this contract. This is just to extend it. When we create contracts, every year we have an opportunity to move forward and extend them another year. And, but yeah, that'll all start in the spring of next year at the end of this contract.
What are some of the other providers for meals? There's one I can't remember.
Sodexo would be one, that's one of the big ones in our state. And there is one other one that's just entered the market that I heard from Central and Eastern Washington, but I'm not familiar with their proposals. Yeah, I'm sure when we go out to bid, they will all be at the table.
Okay, good.
So just one more question, Vic, about this, because I didn't see it in here. But continuing until August 31st of 2024, so are we planning ahead for another 43 meals for our students next summer to make sure that we're continuing?
Yeah, we did put the number 43 in there, though it'll also be contingent on the last day of school because of snow days, things like that. We want to make sure that it'll cover no matter what, whatever we decide. If it's 28 days, if we have snow all winter, it'll be 28 if, or not, we'll have the 43. Going from the following, starting Monday all the way through September 1st, if at all possible.
Okay, thank you, Vic.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vic. I know you're busy during the summer keeping our buildings safe and feeding kids, so I appreciate you. I, I think that our last meeting allowed us an opportunity to look at this contract a little more in depth to ensure that when, that we're feeding kids.
And we're doing that well. So thank you, and thank you for the support.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay.
All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item 6.07, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated July 17th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second, the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated July 17th, 2023. Discussion.
I was just hoping that Superintendent Woodward could just give the basic rundown that you did for me when I asked you about this, just for some in the public who may not know what this is.
You bet. So Brenda, you might have to help me a little bit here, but I might get the numbers wrong. But this is a yearly grant, state funding to support our students who are transitional bilingual programs. And I don't know if there's any new money for next year. It's pretty much what we had received in previous years. So, so a little bit higher. So as you could see within the grant document, that most of the money goes towards staffing to support students, our multi-language, multi-language learners. And I'm not sure that it was much of a departure from how the money was allocated last school year. Do you, Brenda? And I'll also say that I've talked to individual board members, Jen and I talked just last week. I think there might be, maybe an interest to have just a regular presentation on our programming and our strategies that we're using with, with that particular student population.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item 7.01, happy to have this one on the agenda. Superintendent update, Superintendent Sean Woodward.
All right, thank you so much. So I have thoroughly enjoyed my first 17 days on the job. Today's not over, so hopefully when I go home, I'll still feel the same way. Definitely a really warm welcome from, from people. I really appreciate that. That has not gone unnoticed. So currently I'm working through my 100-day plan that I believe will be posted online tomorrow morning for the community to see. I had a bit of a head start, though. As you know, I also worked six transition days in June, and it was really helpful working with the interim superintendent, Marcy Larson, for her to bring me up to speed on all the different aspects of district operations. A couple of you were able to attend the meeting on Tuesday night for parents and community members to give input regarding our MOU with the Monroe Police Department as it pertains to our school resource officer services. We had nine people or so in person at the meeting, and I think roughly 18 people joined us via Zoom. Overall, my impression would be that our, the people who showed up appreciated having the opportunity in the evening, so a lot of people could attend. I also wanted to remind you that there is an RCW that dictates we outline our safety and security services at the beginning of each school year for our students as well. And whatever information we share with our students, that will also push that out to family members. So we'll keep you posted on that this fall when, when, when that happens. You mentioned the summer lunch program, Victor specifically did a lot of heavy lifting there. I think you've spent a lot of time in that, the lunchroom so far, and you will continue to do so, so thank you. And then Chartwell's, we have a representative here as well, so they really had to figure out how we would staff that. And it's going great, and I appreciate that as well. So just one of the aspects of, of this first 100 days for me, for sure, is to engage with people and just listen and learn and understand what are some of the priorities that our stakeholders have for the district. And that would be staff, students, families, and then community members at, at large. So far, I've had the opportunity to meet with each building principal, most of the district administrative team, the MEED Education Association leadership, Chief Jolly of the Monroe Police Department. I think that's a great partnership we have, our local EST Superintendent Larry Francois, as well as a couple of community members that have, that have reached out. Next up is that between now and the next board meeting, which I think is mid-August, I'll be running approximately 12 one-hour-long focus groups, hoping to have eight to 10 people for each of the groups. And we'll plan to get a diverse array of representatives from our students, staff, families, and, and community members. I'll definitely task Laura, you help, with helping me get some students maybe this summer. That would just be fantastic. So more to come there. The purpose of the focus groups would simply, be simply to better understand, again, some of the issues, interests, and our concerns that our, our various stakeholder groups have. And that will help us as far as informing which areas are critical to address sooner than later. And then it will also address some of our long-term priorities and some of that strategic planning that I will share more about at the next meeting and then also at our board retreat next week. And so again, it's been a very positive start, and I'm really looking forward to more work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, moving on to agenda item 8.01, Board Report slash Comments.
Director Barnes? Okay, so I also was at the SRO Community Forum. I really enjoyed hearing back from the community, getting a chance to talk with Chief Jolly and others who serve our community, getting to talk to Kelly Pitts as well. And just one of the feedbacks, because I think Superintendent Woodward covered it pretty much, but one of the feedbacks that I got afterwards from a mother who had come was just, you know, we have fabulous people who are leaders in our buildings and, you know, Craig running SRO and, and being the face of that in our schools. But one of the things that she had mentioned was what happens when those good people aren't there and trying to build those relationships? What, what do we have put in place within, you know, policy that states, you know, we're going to involve the parents as much as possible in these things? And that we're going to make sure that, you know, we're, we're building those relationships. So I just wanted to bring that to you because I thought that that was a really good point and don't know precisely, you know, what we want to do with that, but just sort of some food for thought. I just truly appreciated the feedback, and when I get good feedback, I want to make sure that I share it. So there was that, and yeah, other than that, I'm just enjoying summer, having a break from doing schooling with the kids, getting out, doing some good hikes, and I hope the rest of you are as well.
All right, nothing big today. Pretty short past meeting, you know? But I have been enjoying summer as well. It's been a great year so far. Really looking forward to the board retreat next week. I think it's gonna be a good chance for us to outline, you know, the high-level strategy, or at least hammer out that strategy, which is something that, you know, I've been looking forward to as well as, you know, to know Sean better and talk about, you know, our expectations of him and really. talk about, you know, our expectations of him and really hope to create a more formal plan going forward. So other than that, just hopefully more will come out of that.
At the recent Rotary meeting, I heard a presentation from Northwest Educational School or District 189, and they made a presentation on pre-employment transition services, and I wasn't aware of this. But what they do is they provide workplace readiness training for learning soft skills, learning skills, financial literacy, self-advocacy, for setting goals and assessment, work-based learning, off-campus activities, job interviews, site tours, and they are going throughout the community and looking for talking to employers to find out if if a student has an interest in a particular field and they also provide funding to partner with the employer to, to expose the student to different types of skills and, and opportunities. So it was very good. I didn't know that was even available. And then I, I'm on, following up the last meeting, I was talking about student discipline. And it made a comment about the good students being in class. And what I want people to understand is that what I meant by good students, I didn't mean the other ones were bad. It's just that here's some definitions of what I meant by good. Having the qualities that are desirable or distinguishing a particular thing, serving a desired purpose satisfactorily in quality, quantity, adequately good in circumstances, having desirable and positive qualities, especially those suitable for the thing being specified. So the kids in class that are paying attention that are engaged in the lesson, allowing the teacher to teach the subject, doing their homework and participating. Just wanted to clarify that because there was some misunderstanding regarding to that comment. That's all.
We have great students in the Monroe School District. Thank you. Yeah, we have great students. I was also at the SRO meeting. I thought that was really great. I love that we had so much of our community show up and yeah, it was really great that it was also available on Zoom. I actually was at soccer with my own child, and it was really neat to be able to zoom in. So thank you, Jesse, for making that happen. I was also at Rotary, Rotary is doing great things in our community as well, and so serving and really excited to just continue that work and find other opportunities. What I was asked at the last Rotary meeting, if there are other areas that I thought that, you know, we can help support students, and I thought if you, if kids are hungry, we've got, we've got free lunches at Frank Wagner. So if you see some of your neighborhood kids, let them know there's free lunches until September 1st. And if, yeah, if you're able to help in that, in that space, I would encourage you to as well, if, if maybe they don't have a means of getting there, or if you can go and pick up. And I am also a mother of three. Did you know that we have 17 parks in Monroe? I didn't know that. That is free. That is free fun for all. So I will be exploring all 17 parks. I know of one. And that's because it's right down the street from me, so really excited to go and visit all the other parks with my kids and hang out. And speaking of kids and school and parks and fun, Jump Start, Chain Lake, Freeland, Small Bay, Salem Woods is August 15th through the 17th. And it will be happening at Frank Wagner, August 14th through the 17th. If you know, if you know students who will be entering kindergarten, this is a great opportunity to have them go and visit the school and visit with teachers, and it's really great. For my son in particular, it was really great for him to be able to visit or have those interactions early on because we were able to identify other areas that he needed support in. So when he entered kindergarten, that was a really great space for him because he knew his teachers or he knew the environment. So I would encourage you, if you, again, know parents or know students who are going into the school district, into kindergarten, this is a great opportunity to do that. And I am also having lots of fun with my kids and very, very, very thankful for their teachers because they are with me 24/7, and they are so much fun. But very thankful for the amazing teachers and building leaders that we have, who they get to spend a lot of time with come September. All right, it is 5:30 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.